Land Use and Development Committee meeting. If you will all please rise for me for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask Member Joe Van Dine to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And then will you please call the roll?
Frankie Pretzel.
Here.
Julie Burke Woods.
Here.
Katie Dean Schlemm. Raquel Mitchell. Sherri Newquist.
Here.
Sherri Williams. Joe Van Dine.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. Okay, first up on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Number one, Will County Land Use and Development Committee regular meeting from October 8th, 2024, need a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second, will you please call the roll?
Frankie Pretzel.
Yes.
Julie Burke Woods.
Yes.
Raquel Mitchell. Sherri Newquist.
Yes.
Sherri Williams. Joe Van Dine.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number two, Will County Land Use and Development Committee special meeting, October 10th, 2024, need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Frankie.
Previous roll. And second Williams, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. First on the agenda under new business, ordinance amending the Will County, Illinois zoning ordinance as amended for zoning case ZC 24078 Municipal Trust and Savings Bank, Trust 2282. Owner of record. Timothy Hayes of Western Rivers LLC and Cass Wenland of Wenland and Associates Attorney. They're requesting a special use permit for construction, sales and services located in Moni Township, commonly known as 6525 West Steger Road, Moni, Illinois, County Board, District number three. I do need a motion and a second to open this up.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, and then, yeah, well, go ahead. You want to get staff comments first, or do you want to just?
Staff comments.
Okay, and then we'll go to you first.
Yeah, so I can jump in with this. So this zoning case, ZC 24078, does take place in Moni Township. This property is approximately 800 feet from Steger and Ridgeland Avenue. It is on the south side of Steger. This area, you have Ox Sable Pipeline in the area. You also have a mix of other uses. There's a mix of agricultural districts as well as our I3, our most intense zoning district, as well as some residential subdivisions to the north within Cook County. With this property, you know, Steger Road does see about 2,100 annual daily vehicle trips, and then Ridgeland sees about 1,400 trips as well. Our transportation department is planning on widening Ridgeland Avenue in this area to three lanes, but it is listed as an uncontained project or project. The applicant is intending to operate a fiber optics construction company from the property. This property formerly had a special use permit for a landscape business, so there is a large pole building on the property where the current applicant is looking to use that primarily for the vehicle storage. There will be some outdoor storage, and per our zoning ordinance, they will have to screen from all property lines anything kept outside that is not for sale to the ultimate consumer. So any materials, supplies, vehicles, equipment that is used for the jobs. Typically, these types of uses, they just need an area for storage, and they'll take any equipment supplies they need for the actual job site off-site to wherever the project is, and then do the work there, and then this just becomes a dropping ground at the end of the day where the trucks, the vehicles, any supplies come back to the site for security purposes. So again, there's about a 6,000 square foot detached pole building that's going to be used for the business. The applicant's also looking to demolish the existing house and put up an office in that space. Since it is zone A1, they would have to meet setbacks. The business hours would not be open to the general public. Approximately 12 employees would be onsite at one time, basically picking up what they need for the job sites, and the hours would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Regarding this, again, you know, it was previously used as a landscape business, so similar type use. There are similar type uses in the area. So in terms of what is required, typically a commercial remodel permit just to make sure the pole building meets the appropriate building code requirements. If they are improving the site for the outdoor storage area, they will need a site development permit to make sure that they are complying with the county's regulations in terms of zoning, landscaping, screening, requirements like that, as well as engineering. So if they exceed so much square foot of additional impervious, they may need onsite detention, but that would come through after they get the zoning. Aside from that, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there was no person who came forward to speak in opposition. There were a couple that sat in the audience, but I believe they met with the applicant before the meeting and had their questions answered at that point. There was an email of objection from a neighbor who was about a quarter mile away, and regarding that, that was provided as memo. It sounds mainly that they just prefer the rural atmosphere, and they've seen a lot of change over the years. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a vote seven to zero with the two conditions that staff recommended, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Margie. And then Member Newquist, I know you represent this area.
Thanks, yep. I just want to say this is in my district, and I can really sympathize with the gentleman that wrote the objection letter, but this whole area is becoming more and more industrial. I know in Frankfurt, that's in their planning zone, they've got it pegged as industrial. I'm glad it's going to stay A1, you know, that we're just doing a special use. So for that matter, for that reason, I'll be a yes on this. But I did have a question. One of the things that he was complaining about, and I realize this was in relation to Amazon, and there's nothing we can do about that, is the constant sound of trucks running all day long. Can we, in our, you know, areas where we have control, can we set some sort of stipulation that people can't leave their trucks running all day or for hours, or? And he's a quarter of a mile away. I don't know if he'd even hear it from this site, but that complaint is what made me think of that, because it is really annoying to have trucks running for hours, so, thank you.
Regarding that question, I think it really comes down to the properties themselves. I believe Amazon is within village limits, so it would not be our jurisdiction. In terms of trucks idling, it really comes down to what the zoning district is, if it's approved use, if not, it could be hours of operation, depending on, you know, if there's a special use granted, and there was hours of operation applied to that special use as a condition. Otherwise, I'm not real sure if there is any regulations besides the noise ordinance, and that's, you know, calling the sheriff's department outside of normal hours and getting that investigator, at least have the sheriff come out and see what's up.
Okay, thanks. And yeah, Amazon is within University Park's village limits, so that's why I say there's nothing we can do to address that.
As I read the letter of objection, it seemed more his issues were with what's happening to the area, not specifically about this business. Member Mitchell.
I just wanted to address that a little bit, only because I agree with you, and I sympathize with the gentleman who did write the email. Like, there's change, changes happening everywhere, right? Like, I used to see a cornfield behind me, now I see a big behemoth of a house encroaching on my once beautiful open space. But however, once we, I was just going to say, once we open the door to businesses or whatever, if Amazon can enjoy having their trucks come and go, I just want the same opportunity for smaller, you know, entities to be able to have the same thing. But I do, I would like to look into the hours of operation, maybe that's fair. But, so I'm kind of talking out of both sides, but for the most part, I think they should enjoy the same as Amazon does, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions from committee? Oh, Member Van Dine.
Just a clarification. Well, I do agree with what the committee members have already stated, but I'm reading the email as well, and it looks to me that the individual lives one half mile west and one half mile south, so it may be a little bit farther than what was mentioned here at committee.
Good call. Good call. Go ahead, Member Burke Woods.
Marguerite, the adjoining neighbors, are they residences, or are they businesses?
I do believe the immediately adjacent properties to the west does not appear to have a residence. There may be a residence to the east and to the south, but again, in terms of the operation, most of the existing buildings are north towards Steger on the property, and I believe the rear area would just be outdoor storage, so when they need to go pick up equipment for a specific job, they could just go back there and pick it up. Aside from that, they would have to screen. So there would be a solid fence or some type of hedge put in there to kind of break up the sound, break up the dust, if there's any dust that's created with the use, and kind of help screen the noise and just sight.
So I guess the south border, I believe that's the bottom of the parcel here. Is there residence there? At the bottom, so when you're looking at page one?
There are residents on Steger Road, but I think they're further west, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I'm talking about on the other side of the parcel, which would be south, correct, Marguerite?
Yes, I'm pulling up my GIS right now, just to take a look.
And so?
It does not look like there's any residences for the southern property. It just looks like it's an agricultural field. And then to the north, it appears there may be a residence towards Ridgeland on the northwest corner of Ridgeland and Steger. So that's 600 feet.
And there's a parcel in between them?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So here's the one thing I just want to consider. I know I have a commercial use in my district, which we approved with the understanding the developer said, well, we'll make sure we provide screening for the neighbors, and, you know, we'll be very cognizant of it. The end result is they have RVs now right on top of their fence that they have to look at all day, every day. When I called about that end result, I was told that our committee needed to put a variance in at that time to say no parking 15 feet from the property line. And because we didn't, they literally park all of these gigantic UVs right up next to the fence, and these poor people see that all day, every day. So this particular parcel, you obviously don't have any residence on top of it, but if we had, I would want to make sure that we require an appropriate buffer, so people are not having to look at this all day, every day from their, you know, their homes. But there is nobody in the general area that this would impact in that way.
It does not appear so at the way the aerials show right now. Nothing's to stop in the future, say A1, somebody decides to build a house. But again, with A1, you have 50-foot setbacks from property lines. The fence regulations pretty much apply to the setbacks for a certain height. If they want to go closer, it's usually a shorter fence, but for sides, it's usually, you know, five to seven feet typically along property lines, and then there's usually landscaping along the exterior if they need landscaping.
And one other question about outdoor storage. So yeah, so this is a business, I'm assuming they're going to have vehicles and trucks and maybe even do maintenance on these. So they're going to have automotive fluids, whether it be antifreeze, or do we have anything in our ordinance that specifies that they need to be kept in inside storage? We have a parcel in our industrial park where this stuff is thrown around like garbage all over the lot, all kinds of automotive fluids, and that should never happen. Of course, we're not, we're trying to get it addressed, and it's not working. So how do we make sure that doesn't happen on this property?
Well, in terms of incidental maintenance to any type of motor vehicle repair, anything along those lines, typically that's not permitted based on this use of the property for construction, sales and service. If it was a different use, it would have to meet EPA standards. Those are typically triple B, so then you have to do it in the building, and then we would rely on complaints to be called in to go out and investigate any violations to that.
So I would just like, perhaps Chair Pretzel, in the future, we can look at the, maybe it's our requirements that we specifically state that these products have got to be stored indoors without exception, so this does not, because compliance, there is no compliance.
What products are you?
Anything, automotive, transmission fluid, whatever.
This isn't, this is not a mechanic repair shop.
No, I understand.
They're, they were going to have incidental trucks, they have 12 employees. I don't, I mean, I don't think it's fair to assume they're going to be doing oil changes and fluid changes in the parking lot, but?
We don't know.
We don't know, you're right. Mr. Wenland, I see you're here, if you'd like to step up. Mr. Wenland's representing the applicant. Please turn your microphone on for you.
Mr. Radner, is that it?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Yeah, I also have Tim Hayes with me here, not only from the applicant from Western Rivers, but he's also with, who would be the contractor there. The contractor, Jules Madison, their offices are currently on North Cedar Road in New Lenox. You can see what goes on there and the quality of the facility. Their trucks, okay, the outfitted trucks, I'm talking about the ones you can see as a construction truck, they go directly to their jobs, okay? What you see onsite is the pickup trucks from estimators, and it was like that, this is a fiber optic construction business. This is a kind of a high-tech construction business with all union operators, union workers. There is no mechanic facility, there's no shop there, they don't service trucks there. This will be where they would store those large rolls, what you see is fiber optic wire that gets you all internet, and so that's the kind of outdoor storage you would see. The vehicles you'd see on the property, again, are more a regular pickup truck, you'd see an estimator drive, office people, et cetera.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
Mr. Wenland's here, any questions from the committee for him? Okay, is there? Go ahead, go ahead. We'll start with Member Mitchell first.
No, your question's more important, mine is just a side question.
Okay. This is just, when I was looking at the packet, you know, the map, like our land resource management plan, so this isn't really for you guys, this is more, so, but it says it's not in conformance with the plan. I was just kind of wondering what that meant, but if you guys have questions for the applicant first, go ahead, and I can wait to get that one answered.
That's a good question. Looking at it, I would probably say in terms of the property staying A1, considering freestanding industry and office, when you look at agricultural uses, typically that's not in conformance, but if it is located in suburban communities, the development form being freestanding industry and office, which is very similar to construction, sales and service, would be inconformant. So in a way, it is, but it isn't just because that area has seen a lot of change in the last several years where the plan has not caught up to that.
It's still A1, in other words, it's not any industrial, okay, thank you.
Okay, mine was a side question. So you would keep the fiber optic cables outside, those can stay outside?
Correct, that's what we, when staff referred to the outside storage, that's what you'd see out there. So you see those fiber optic, they're about as tall as I am, about six, six and a half feet tall, and there's, I don't know what color they are now, you see yellow or orange or whatever they may be, and they're got the, all the wires there, they give you your high-speed internet data lines, et cetera, yeah.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering, I was like, they could stay outside, and they don't, nothing happens to them?
They can, in fact, that's why they're a direct bury capable, so you don't need to put them in a duct or anything, they can drop them right down on the ground, hopefully they're there for the next 40 years without being exposed. So if they can do that, they certainly can sit outside.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody else here that wants to talk on this case? Okay, anybody want to do a previous roll on this?
Do a previous roll.
A second then?
Okay, we have a previous roll, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that concludes new business. Onto other business. Number one, Denler, Unit 2, Letter of Credit Release. Brian, oh, where Brian go, Margie, do you want to?
Um, yeah. Brian will be right back, and I can't answer this one.
Yeah, we can wait. I'm sorry? That's fine, we can wait.
Oh, no, that was, Palin walked out.
Oh, yeah.
Deja vu.
Yeah, if it's okay with all of you, I'm going to just go to, oh, sorry.
We waited just for that time.
Mr. Radner, we're on the first item under other business, which is Denler, Unit 2, Letter of Credit Release.
Okay, so, sorry about that, I thought I would make it back in time.
That's what you did, it's fine.
So the Denler, Unit 2, Plan Unit Development, some of you may recall that, they came before this committee and the county board a little over a year ago, had the property rezoned to I2, and the plan was to do a industrial subdivision, all right? So some time had passed, they weren't able to move forward with the original plan, and they never recorded the final plat. So even though this committee approved the final plat for the Denler, Unit 2, they never recorded it, and if you don't record a subdivision within 30 days of approval, then that approval is no longer valid. And they decided that they just weren't going to go forward with the project. So as part of a final plat procedure, the developer has to put up a letter of credit. That was for $2,831,000, or $2,831,624,000, and they are now looking to have that letter re-credit returned to them. We are holding on to that in our office. There is not an exact procedure for this in the subdivision ordinance. It was the State's Attorney's Office recommendation that we came to this committee, which is the plat committee as defined by the code, and that they could approve the release, and then we would return it to the developer. It would make sense, there's no plan to go forward with this subdivision, it was never recorded, so it was never subdivided, so it would make sense to return the money to the developer. And there's no outstanding fees or costs, everything has been paid and up to date.
So we just need to make a motion, second, vote?
Make a motion.
I'll second it, but I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Just real quick, so does the zoning then stay I2, or does it revert to the original zoning?
The zoning stays I2, and there is a plan, they have another person that's interested in the property. They weren't able to make it work with the original layout of the subdivision, so they're abandoning the subdivision plan and are planning to move forward with a different user for the property for a permitted use.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Previous.
Previous roll?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, authorizing a second extension for a special use permit, ZC 22003, McMahon Farms LLC, owner of record, and Richard Kavanaugh of KGG LLC, attorney. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Brian, do you want to fill us in on this one?
Sure, the county board approved this special use permit in 2022, and it's a property that had an existing building on it, and one of the conditions was that the improvements complied with the building code. It's taken a long time to get there, but we're getting really close now. There was one extension granted earlier this year, which would be the first extension. We needed an interpretation from the Capitol Board from the state of Illinois on whether or not an elevator would be required. We finally got around that issue and got a waiver. There's still a few remaining issues, and the special use extension will expire in about a week, but we are very close, there's a chance the permit couldn't even be released within that period, but just in case it isn't, they are requesting the second extension so that the special use would still be valid for this property.
Okay. Chair. Member Van Dine?
Yeah, thank you. I will mention this again, I think it may be a good idea for this committee to try to figure out a way not to bring these extensions to the committee. I know the short time that I've sat here, we've never denied an extension. We understand that things do take some time, and as long as there's no major changes, maybe that might be something that we can move forward to in the future to streamline some of these meetings. Thank you.
I would support that too, and I've been sitting here a little longer, and I can also say I don't think we've ever denied one of these, so. We do have a motion and a second?
Previous roll.
Previous?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Solar Status Report. Margie?
So with this, I believe it was last month, we just wanted an update regarding the acreage of what was approved. I did not provide any tables, but I do have the rough numbers. The Farm Bureau has an estimated 216,593 acres of farmland in the county. The approved solar is about 951.67 acres, and that's based on their special use request areas, so that's about 0.4% of the farmland in the county. And then based on that, what has been permitted or isn't the permitting process, it's about 26% of what was approved, or 0.1% of the total farmland in the county. That basically is based on 33 approved special use permits that are considered active, that have gone through the two-year process of getting permits, or are going through extensions to make sure that they get their use legally established.
Okay, we have any questions from the committee on that?
May I just request that information be in black and white? Can you email the committee so we can take a closer look at that?
Yes, for sure.
Thank you so much for looking at that information, it's very helpful to us.
And I know we discussed last month, looking at, you know, how many of these, or having a discussion around how many of these we would prefer within, you know, any radius of another one, right? So we, I think tossed around five miles, two and a half miles, whatever. I would like to have some sort of, from our county, even though we may not be able to legally say it, I would like them to know we prefer to have no more than, whatever the number we could come to an agreement on, two of them within a two and a half mile radius, something along those lines. And I think that what happens is, and now I'm starting to look at it through a different lens, I drive around, I see the high voltage lines, I see cornfields, I'm like, that's a great spot for a solar project, right? I don't know, but I imagine that that's what they're looking for, and I just don't want this to become, you know, they're taking over Peatone or Moni, you know, because that's not, I don't think that's what the people want. So, I don't know if the committee agrees with that, but I would like to have some sort of our recommendation on that.
And to follow up with that, Chair, that's kind of why I wanted that information to be brought forward today. 0.4% of the total farmland in Will County is merely nothing. And we kind of were afraid of maybe this turning into something huge, and, you know, some of the municipalities have maybe learned their lesson with the warehousing, and we didn't necessarily want something to become bigger than what we can manage, and with those numbers, it's clearly not happening yet, but it's something to keep an eye on. Yeah, thank you.
Any comments? Looks like Member Newquist has your microphone on.
Yeah, I just want to say that in theory, I think that's a great idea, trying to limit, you know, solar farm density, if you will, but I also think it's something that we really need to consult with the State's Attorney's Office on, because we don't need to consult with the State's Attorney's Office on, because we don't want to, you know, we don't want to guideline ourselves into a loss, a potential lawsuit. That'd be my only comment on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Go ahead, Member Williams.
Yeah, I agree, too. We don't want it to be just solar farm after solar farm after solar farm. So, where they're placed, to me, is very, very important. So, I do think that's something we could keep an eye out on, and as Member Newquist said, we, of course, have to be in compliance with the law, but there's no reason that we can't have a plan in place just in case.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that the law is going to tell us we have no legal standing on this at all, right? So, this would just be us kind of, yeah, recommendation, suggestion, whatever you want to call it. So, go ahead, Member Trineer.
Thank you, Chair Pretzel. My question actually goes back to the statistics that were just mentioned, the 216,000 acres of farmland and the 951 acres of solar farm. Is that approved solar farm or built solar farm? That's kind of my, because I can see on the list, there's a huge list of things that we've approved.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, the 951 acres is approved special use for solar. If you want an acreage for what has been either permitted and is operational or is in the permitting process, it's about 245 acres.
Thank you, because I think that's a really important distinction. These smaller solar farms, and I don't know what the megawatt number is, say three megawatts, I don't know what it is, gigawatts, whatever, they have to go through the state, and there's a fairly lengthy process before they actually get constructed, and sometimes, if I recall correctly, they don't ever get constructed, even though we've approved them. I might be wrong on that, but I don't think so. It's these bigger farms, like the one that we had on our agenda last month, they don't have to wait through that state process. They can get erected pretty quickly. Sherry's looking at me. Yeah, if it's like 300 megawatts, they got some kind of clause that they don't have to get in line like the three megawatt ones do. And I just wanted to confirm that what I heard about that was correct. I don't know if anybody here knows.
Never heard of that.
Okay, well, then, maybe I was given some bad information.
I don't know. I will say, I know you don't sit on this committee, I don't know if you read our agendas, but if you do, on this line item, Colin created a map that shows-
Yeah, I see it.
That's been approved, what's been rejected, so.
Yeah, I see it. I, it just, I wanted to get the acreage. I didn't see that on here, and that, that I was interested in. And I did sit on the land use committee for a number of years, I'm just not on it right now.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's your turn in the barrel.
Yeah. Margie?
No, I was just going to pipe in. With the smaller megawatts, I do know the state has the community solar, which they define it to be up to five megawatts. So, anything less than five, or five megawatts or below could qualify for that community solar, and that's basically the measurements of what we have right now, and did not include the larger one that's still in the public hearing process.
Got it. Thank you. Gerald Gallow?
Yeah, thank you. So, with the, you have to look at what the potential is, because if the potential is 951 acres, you're at 1,000 acres, and it can continue to grow. And that is very concerning to me, because we need to look at, at this in the sense that the technology for solar will change, but we need to look at how much revenue we bring in from the ag community. We bring in a lot of revenue from the ag community every year, and that'd be a lost lot goes out of our port. It's at center point, a lot goes out of that port there, and there's a lot of local jobs. When you build a solar, there's nothing that happens, right? There's no jobs created. The only jobs that are created is to build it. Once it's built, there's nobody doing anything there, and, you know, drive around, there's no maintenance done on a lot of these, these projects, right? Some projects aren't even up to code as far as having the right amount of coverage for the, for retaining the soil, not having runoff. They put in all these, I know a lot of you are very much in favor of landscaping, and I have pictures on my iPad I didn't get to send, but I'll have that sent through Kim soon to you guys. They have all this landscaping, so like, take this desk, for instance, you know, everything was landscaped, but some, some of these things are dead, and it's surrounding three sides of this one solar facility in, in the Moni area. This is like, do we really want to spend those dollars on that type of thing or not? If you go down to Kankakee County and look at there, they don't have a lot of landscaping around it, unless it happens to be next to a residence, then they have landscaping. Otherwise, otherwise, they just have the fence, they have the ag fencing, which is the wood post with the nice wire screening. It's not as obnoxious looking as chain link, and I would recommend that on every project, even these big, this big 3,000 acre one, they, they don't want to do that. Well, too bad. If they want to build it here, make them do that. Tell them that they need to do it, because it's more, it fits in with the environment, just as in any community. You don't let anybody build any house. You have standards that they have to follow. So, in Kankakee, there was a really nice, and I have that picture where it's just the solar, it's got that ag fence, and there's no, there is no landscaping at all on the outside, which is good, because now they can mow up to the fence. Because if you look at these other pictures that I'll be sending, you have all these plants that were planted, bushes, some kind of other shrubbery that's not a bush, whatever, and, and these trees, whether they're a spruce tree or whatever, in between now, you have nothing but weeds. So, nobody's going to come out and take a little push mower and go in here and mow it all. So, to me, it makes sense just to have them plant grass, a prairie mix that, soil and water can approve, whatever, and cut it so you don't have weeds the way we've had. So, we need to look at all of that, and you guys should take, take a map and go out and look at this now. Unfortunately, a lot of those weeds will be dying once we have a big kill. We haven't had a big frost to kill all the weeds at this point, but you'll see that in my pictures. It turns out looking like a mess versus the one, like I said, that I've seen several in Kankakee County where they don't have that landscaping requirement, and like, just there's one that I saw, I don't remember that I took a picture of it, but there was a resident, so they did have some screening for that person there. These are the kind of things we have to look at. 245 approved in the process, 951 approved by us. That's a lot of land, there's potential, they keep coming every month. So, just because they aren't approved doesn't mean that they won't happen, and as a whole, we need to really be considerate of it. And what do we want? Remember, it's a special use permit, we don't grant special use permits all the time. We haven't been through the court process yet for those other lawsuits that we have in Green Garden. I think what's important is that the state needs to see what's happening, and they need to make changes. They weren't willing to change it because we hadn't been through a full year under that legislation. So, those changes, we need to continue to push through our Aseco Board and things like that. So, it's just not a matter of, of a simple solar facility built out there. It is detrimental to the people in the area. It is something that isn't, you know, you're not typically looking at, and in your communities where all of you guys live, you have requirements as to what can be built and what can't be built for the standard of the community that you live in. And the ag community would like the same type of respect.
Any other comments? And then, Judy, if you want to just keep going here, you're next on the agenda under Solar Guidelines for the County, still has your name on it. Did you have anything?
Turn myself off. I didn't bring my iPad in, I was in a finance, looking at the budget, but could we bring it up, Margie, and then we could go through it?
For, I'm sorry?
Solar Guidelines?
Yes.
So, what she did originally was, all the comments everybody's made over the course of time, she's been collecting. She's a great collector, I've learned. Every comment we've made, she's put together in this, in this document, okay? And then, last time, I said, okay, we really need to have it more of, instead of a list, it should be, you know, did you talk to the road commissioner? Yes, I did, and I talked to so, Mr. or Miss someone, so-and-so. Do you have approval for this? So, they're aware of all those things. So, when they come to us, we don't have to ask them questions, the same question. We'll have a list, like we have our agenda, it'll, you'll have it beforehand, of course, it'll be filled out by the company applying for a special use permit, and you can say, oh, they did, oh, they did everything but number eight. So, what's up with number eight? Why is there no answer? They might simply say we didn't have time, based upon whatever, to complete that. So, I think that's important to get.
Chair, thank you for that idea, and matter of fact, I did read an email sent by Don Tomzak this morning, and that document was sent to all of us, I believe?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to.
Okay.
I see it now. That looked great.
Yep, that's exactly the one. There's twenty questions remain at the bottom of this document, all those questions there. So, I looked it over, it looked, it looked like, it reflected all the comments from these board members, so it's definitely available to us.
Yep, that's great. I think, I think it looks good, Margie, thanks, I didn't get to read it. And then, I would almost say, if this is something you can vote on and move forward, it'd be great to get it out the door, and we can tweak it again later.
I believe we already did, right? This is a working document, we can amend it at any time, but we did already vote to give this to every applicant.
Yep, okay. I just didn't see the final.
We could probably remove it from the agenda, just be mindful that this is something that we want to continue to look at and improve. As you come up with something else, you're like, you know what, we should add that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to know who the official signature is. Is it the official who they talk to, or who's, who's the official signature?
Yeah, so, the goal with this is just to have a track record of the applicant meeting with the different entities. So, for example, the Will County Land Use Department, the pre-application meeting, it would be any of the, probably planners, myself, Ashlyn, Ellie, signing it, yeah.
No, I understand, I understand what the document is. So, oh, so, somebody from you guys with your department?
We would sign that for like, the pre-application meeting, in terms of the road district, if they met with somebody, sometimes it's the secretary or one of the other road district workers there. It doesn't necessarily have to be the highway commissioner, but-
It should be the highway commissioner.
It could be the highway commissioner in terms of being there, it just depends if they're in the office or not. A lot of times, we get comments from, like, the assistant highway commissioner.
So, let me give you the scenario. I'm a solar farm person, and you and I are meeting. I talked to, did you talk to Joe over at the highway department of Troy Township? Yeah, I talked to Joe, we talked yesterday. So, then, you put on this form, yeah, he talked to Joe, yes, I'm making names up, yeah, he talked to Joe over at Troy Township. But is there any follow-up? And like, he says he talked, so you're going by the word of the applicant that they spoke-
On this sheet, it should be Joe, the highway commissioner, signing, you know, the official signature, or at least the applicant providing some type of documentation saying, we did have a meeting, or email correspondence with the highway commissioner following up as well.
Okay, so, that's, that's what I'm going, that's what I'm angling for, right? Like, I need to feel that there's some real verification that the conversation actually took place, and sometimes it may have taken place on, over the phone. You may want to say, send me an email, you know, see an email verifying that we had this conversation today, so that you have that on your record. So, that's all.
And that's, yeah, our hearing from what the committee wants, that's something we definitely can direct the applicants to get more in writing and have a record of the key people they've been talking to.
Go ahead.
I didn't get a chance to look at the email this morning, but I thought, like, the questions and the things that you were documenting were really good. My only question, or actually, comment was, you know how you have to be prepared to answer similar questions to the following? And for example, the second one, how does a commercial solar energy facility work? I think we should make that specific to their project, you know, because there's different types of solar facilities. So, like, how does your solar energy facility work? You know, what is your life cycle? I just think we should make that as specific to the project as possible.
Makes sense.
Any other comments on that?
Thank you. Okay, so, Marguerite, regarding accessory battery energy storage facilities, there was, I, I forgot to bring up, under the Solar Status Report, could you also include that in the key? Which of these zoning cases include an accessory battery energy storage facility? I think that would be helpful to know. That way, when we refer back to that zoning case, we know, is it simply solar, or is it a battery facility? And then, you've got here, you've got, I guess, is this a link to that special use permit for battery? Oh, yes, it does. It goes to our ordinance. So, I'm just going to make a suggestion that our committee take a look at that battery energy storage facility ordinance as well, and let's take a look at it, see if there's anything we want to add or, you know, change with that. So, would you be okay with that, Chair Pretzel? Okay. So, if everybody, do you guys see that? It's at the bottom of the checklist on page four, and it's the last paragraph under filing requirements. They've got a link right there, and that goes to that special use permit.
And what specifically are you asking us to?
Just to take, let's take a look at that special use permit, review it, see if it needs any updating, you know, and include that in our review and update.
On the checklist?
On the-
You want, like, another checklist if they're applying for battery storage?
Well, I mean, you know, we're, we're looking at solar guidelines, so, add that to our review of solar guidelines.
And what, do you have specific, like, why don't we take some time to think of some specific things for the checklist, instead of just putting in, you know, it wouldn't be very clear on what you're asking from them if you just put-
No, no, I'm asking the committee, let's take a look at this battery, okay? Just the committee, let's take a look at it, read it. I skimmed through it, but let's take a look at it and see if we have any updates, and because there is, we've seen a concern with battery storage, a lot of concerns with lithium batteries. The battery, the batteries that they use for these facilities, what type of batteries are they? Are they lithium, or are they? Does anybody know?
I believe there are different types of batteries that are used. It really comes down to the industry and what they're looking to use.
Okay. So, I would say, as a county, to be proactive. That's a question we want to, you know, what type of batteries are you using in your project? Because there has been an issue with lithium batteries in multiple ways, from cars to other projects. So, that's a suggestion I'd like to make. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I wish.
Okay, we're moving on. Zoning notifications and procedures, you know, we had our special meeting last month. I know one of the things we talked about was possibly including a requirement for specific font, not just size of font, but the actual font. Do we do anything with that, or do we have any comments on that? Okay.
Props.
Oh, I love props. For those of you that weren't part of the meeting, we had an incident that Julie showed some pictures of, where the person made it with a Sharpie. They followed the requirements, but it was still not very easy to read for pass or buyers, so we thought maybe this would be a solution to that. If we had a font requirement, then they wouldn't be able to make it by hand, they would actually have to use, you know.
Okay, so, this is the current sign that we, that we issue to the, to the applicants. This is two and a quarter inch size. This is inch and three quarters. This is inch and a half, I'm sorry, two and a half inches, and this is one inch. The, the draft text provided adds the comments that you provided regarding the content of posted notices. Definitely have to make sure we have the case number, and you wanted a description in plain language. And then, for any notice that is not provided by us, this one, the, I put in as a draft, so, this, this is 24 by 18. I put in as a draft- I put in as a draft 36 by, three feet by three feet as the bare minimum, which is, whoops. Which is this? With a, the, made out of weather resistant materials and printed uniformly, uniformly in plain block style lettering at least two inches in height and must be approved by the zoning administrator. So basically, these are the types of plain block lettering. It's in a uniform manner on a larger, larger sign. If the zoning administrator deems that they need something other than what we provide them.
Okay. What do you think?
I love it.
I would suggest that we should do away with that little sign and do the big signs because I've driven out trying to see those little signs before. And especially if it's in a cornfield or, you know, a field where it's like not prominent or if it's set back, they're almost impossible to see. I really think, I know it's more expensive, but I really think we should go the three feet by three feet all the time.
Or our staff, the ones that we provide.
And I have to agree with Sherri's comments as well. Now, the smaller sign, absolutely love it. That probably would be good in a retail setting, you know.
In residential.
Okay. But what we're seeing in our industrial areas and our large rural areas is that type of a sign. First of all, it's not visible from the road. There's all kinds of things. So absolutely love both of your proposals and agree, one size doesn't fit all. So let's keep that criteria. You know, the key thing is visibility and we, people need to have the ability to read the sign. And right now they're not getting that, especially, you know, in these industrial areas. So thank you. I absolutely love it.
Director, can you think of any reason why we, any, why we wouldn't do something like that?
I would just suggest leaving, you know, administrative discretion. So on a case by case basis for need and particularly because of cost associated with some of the installations.
I like it. Go ahead, Member Newquist.
Thank you, Chair Pretzel. I live in the village of Bowling Brook. Their sign requirement is four by eight.
I know.
And you can see it if you slow down, but you have to slow down. I, if this was the requirement in my village, I would never know anything was happening because there are so many junk signs all over our town, you know, tutoring, mow your grass, hang your Christmas lights. I mean, it would just be another small sign. I wouldn't notice it. And I get the cost, but do we pay for these signs? Because in Bowling Brook, you pay for your own sign. And I would assume that if you're a business or whatever you are that want to change the zoning, you know, you can afford a four by eight sign.
Well, I will tell you, there are some challenges, but I have some experience working with Bowling Brook and I had to do this.
Oh, yeah, I know you do.
And I have a relationship with the printer. I called him, I said, here's what I need. He gave it to me in a banner style. I went out there with a sledgehammer and some stakes thinking I was going to put this thing in the ground. It's not that simple. You do have to have the special ramming tool. You have to have multiple stakes. If you don't hang it tight, it drips in the, drips in the middle. So mine wasn't very good and I'll be the first to admit it, but I probably needed to hire a service.
Well, we used a rigid one, a rigid sign, just like those.
And those tend to pick up wind.
And we punched holes in it. But we didn't have the special tool, but we put it in and, yeah, it's not always easy.
So go ahead, Director.
No, I mean, years ago, I mean, when I worked in private sector, I would do this with large signs. And I would hire a sign company to come out and do it. And whether or not there was ballast on the bottom of it or if it was put into the ground and they had to have Julie come out and mark the ground, they would pay them to do the install and the removal as well as the prep and materials. So it can be expensive, so.
Yeah, I was in real estate and we had to, you know, call the company to come put the signs out. We didn't do it ourselves for Baird and Warner. So, I mean, I get it's not easy, but I think if the point is making sure that the people in the community understand what's going on, I would agree with Board Member Newquist, bigger is better.
Any other comments? Did you have a comment, Judy here? Okay, all right. Thanks, Colin, appreciate your work on that.
So the next step would be to take this to public hearing and then we'll come back to you for final approval to the county board. Those are our next steps.
Okay, sounds good.
We didn't get an answer, who pays for the signs? I didn't hear that.
The applicant pays for their signs.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have zoned out. I think I zoned out.
Well, yeah, I guess, when do we provide a sign?
So typically, if you do the smaller yard sign, it's part of your application fee. If you, if it is decided that you have to do alternative signage, you are paying out of pocket for contacting the sign company, getting it made, getting it installed, having it removed. And depending on when you read your email with the instructions on how to do it, if there's a quicker timeframe to get it printed, to make the notification timeframe, there may be a fee associated with that.
We're, I think we're spending a lot of time. It's good that the sign is bigger, but we're talking 50 bucks for a sign. Like, you know, you could pay anybody, buy a sign for 50 bucks, have it installed for 20. We're talking about multimillion dollar companies that want to bring in solar farm. It's not, it's, I think we're just doing way too, too much overthinking on this.
It's not just solar.
Right.
I opened her crumble cookies and had to do it.
It could be, it could be a small business, it could be many different things. I kind of like the ideas that they have right now that if it, if the smaller sign is sufficient, have that recommendation. If it's in the country, you need the large sign because you can't see it. Like you say, it's disappearing amongst everything. But the smaller one could be in an unincorporated area that's not like a country, you know, it's still unincorporated. So I think you guys, yeah, have the public hearing, see what they say.
Yeah, I don't want to overthink it either.
Right.
Okay, moving on. Procedures of development of agricultural slash former agricultural properties or drainage issues. And Judy, still, that has your name on it as well.
Right, so we talked about that last month and I'm not sure where we left off, I'm sorry. But we talked about the fact that if it's an ag area, right now what happens if it's an ag and you convert it into a residential rural estate, whatever, you don't have any kind of field tile study done. And we had the conversation with staff and the staff said that could be costly to do a field tile study and that if there is problems when they're building and they hit a tile, usually the landowner knows because, and then they have to fix it because it could be flooding their own area. But that doesn't mean damage might not, could be done to field tiles and then not impact the area and still impact the area around them. The conversation also was during that meeting that, so while new field tiles are mapped, the old field tiles are not. So the old field tiles are the clay. You'll see farmers out in the middle of a field in a random location because that clay tile has collapsed. And so they have, they're replacing it because you have a, you get a washout, you get a huge hole in the middle of your field, so you're going to, you know, do something with it. So my concern was when we have people who take a 15 acre parcel, because if it's 15 acres, I think they didn't have to do it. Is that what it was, Margie? If remember, was a larger size, they didn't have to do it, but the small ones did.
So with that, with the 15 acres, I believe they decided to make three lots, five acres, so it didn't have to go through a subdivision requirement. But in terms of actually getting it divided or building houses on it, they would have to meet the water resource ordinances and things of that nature. If there's floodplain, I believe an engineered site plan, things of that nature would be required as part of the building permit, but no drain tile.
But we do have, we do have so many situations where even if that's small, three, there'll be three homesites on the 15 acres. So you could have 15 acres made into a rural subdivision where there'd be a lot more homes per acre. They, I have seen that the development of that property impact water onto the surrounding properties. My thought is, what can we do to prevent that from happening? I'm not want to prevent them from having three, you know, homesites on 15 or a rural subdivision with 40 houses, whatever. I don't really care about that so much. But I don't want the surrounding landowners to have that negative impact of the flooding on their property because this got done. And granted, some of those properties that have been built a while now, but I'm just looking to safeguard so in the future this doesn't happen with like those three properties that one did do some digging for the foundation and that, and it did impact the residents, the farms around it. Now, maybe after everything's done, they're going to fix it, but it's almost like, okay, well, when you're a farmer and you've just planted a bean field and you get rain and you typically didn't have just a flooded area and now you have a flooded area, you've got to replant that crop area for your neighbor who's putting up a house. That's where the problem comes in. So I think it's important for them to do it and, and they should want to know where their stuff is because even after they're done putting up a house, if they go and dig another area to do something else that you don't know about, I don't know about, because they don't come and get a permit, they hit a different tile line or maybe they didn't hit a tile line when they're putting their house up and now they're hitting a tile line, which causes problems. You know, and I've seen some purposely hit a tile line to put in a pond that's not even approved. And then that causes, it takes so much water, but then the water can also bleed. I'm trying to find a way for us to prevent that from happening because I've seen it happen quite often in the rural area. If you're living in town, you're not seeing it as much because you got sewers. We don't have sewers, so that, that's a problem. So that's why I was thinking it's probably beneficial to do it if you're converting from A1 to another type of property. If you're in A1 and it's your 10 acres, you're going to flood yourself out, I guess. Yes, the impact could be elsewhere. Thank you.
Go ahead, Member Newquist.
So I didn't understand a lot of this, but it looked to me that every county around us has some sort of requirement for a drain tile study. And I'm thinking maybe they're on to something like Judy is saying. So it seems to me, I know it would add to the cost, but it just seems to me to make sense going forward to require some sort of drain tile study. I mean, I realize we can't go back and map, you know, all of the drain tiles that are out there. That would be a ridiculous expense and I don't even know if it would make a difference. But I don't see anything, anything negative about putting something in going forward. But again, like I said, I didn't really understand all of this other than the fact that everybody seemed to address it at smaller parcels except us.
Thank you, Frankie. I can, I can talk with some sort of experience on this as well. Maybe, maybe we can consider the drain tile some sort of utility so they're involved with the Julie system where they have to come out and identify the drain tile.
Though, because it's not going to pick it up. Well, you know, they're not tracked. But also, I mean, if you're looking for them, I don't think that they can find them as easily because it's not metal, right? Right now.
Yeah, you do, you put a metal fish tape inside. I mean, it could be very expensive. But what I also want to comment on, I know like even if you are working in a municipality and the Julie system is required, there's fiber optic, there's electrical lines that are identified, sewer, et cetera. And there are contractors that will come and rip the utility up and cover it up and not tell the owners of the utility. You know, it's unfortunate, not everybody's truthful. So they could easily rip up drain tile and they know it's going to be expensive and cover it right back up. So there's, it's not a perfect system, but appreciate what you're trying to do. I mean, we just need to try to come up with some sort of idea to do the best we can.
Oh, maybe, maybe we can look and see what the surrounding counties do for those smaller ones, like Sherri said, so we can see what they're doing. But I think it, I think, I think it'd be good. I mean, if you guys had a parcel out in the country and you had a five or 10 acre mini farm because you bought it and your neighbor decides to go ahead and split their property that they're not using, keep a portion for themselves and split it and they have a negative impact and now your horse pasture is flooded all the time. Trying to get that landowner to do things can be difficult. So I just think if we do it at the development stage before anything is converted over and changed, it would be a good benefit to everybody involved.
I think we all agree. Brian?
So I think there's been a good summary of the issues here. I did want to point out, I did mention at the last meeting that we had on this topic that the existing water resource ordinances has a couple of exemptions in there for why a drain tile study may not be required based on the current code. And that's a situation when somebody is constructing something that's 1,000 square feet or less on a property smaller than two and a half acres. And then something that is, a property that's two and a half acres or greater, as long as the structure wasn't 3,000 square feet or greater, then a site plan wouldn't be required. And the site plan is what's triggering the drain tile study. So if a site plan isn't required, then we're not going to get the drain tile study. So I brought that up at the last meeting. I did share with you what Kankakee, Grundy, Kendall and Kane are doing in this, in the memo that I prepared for today's meeting. And as mentioned by Board Member Newquist, all of them are requiring some sort of drain tile study. A couple of the county, Kankakee and Kane have the most detail, I think, on what they're looking for in the drain tile study. So one thing that I think you could consider, and this is the feedback that I was looking for, is that maybe you're okay with the current exemptions for site plans, but it's still, we could add a section to the code that would require a drain tile study. You could determine what the parameters would that would be for, you know, what size development or maybe it's any development. So even if a site development permit isn't required, a drain tile study would still be required. So that's kind of the feedback I was looking for today because if that's the direction the committee wants to go, then we could prepare draft language that, that would do that.
I think it should be tied to the site development plan. I don't necessarily need everybody doing, forcing them to do drain tile studies for some little addition they're putting on or something.
Well, but what if they hit a drain tile?
Well, on a, like a two acre or one and a half acre property, is that, is that?
Brian, why do we have the exemption for two and a half acre?
The current exemption is basically, so this is just a general thought that the board had previously determined that if you have a two and a half acre property or less and you want to build a thousand square foot structure, so let's just say, what is that? 25 by 20, is that right? 25, no, 25 by, what is it, 50? All right, so there's 1,000. Did you want to get a site plan for that? Most people think, no, it's not necessary. The size of the structure isn't going to impact drainage to your neighbor. As long as there's no floodplain or wetland on the property, it should be fine. So that, you know, that's kind of what the board had determined previously. And that didn't really contemplate whether there was drain tiles on the property or in the vicinity.
So, so here's what my concern is. So this is based on an assumption, right? A project like that, what impact could it possibly have? Let's say if it's 1,000 square feet. Well, my, I'll give you a living example of the issues you can have with water. So in my subdivision, it at one time was all farmland. So my house is built on what was farmland before the subdivision was built. My neighbor behind me put in a three story addition, basement, first floor, second floor, came five feet from the property line. And ever since that point in time, all of us neighbors surrounding, we're just inundated with water. And when it rains, I have a pond in my backyard for a day, two days. Moss everywhere, killed all our pine trees. And so now I'm letting a natural grove of red buds, what, like the only thing I can, we can plant there. Can't plant grass, just doesn't work. Obviously, that small addition to their home created some permanent water issues. Obviously, that small addition to their home created some permanent water issues. City's attitude is, oh, well, put in a French drain. It's only about $10,000. And we're like, wait a minute. So. You know, my, to tie it to the size of a project or, you know, the size of the property, to me, in real life, is not necessarily practical. Our issue is, is that we want to make sure that when you alter that land, you do not hit a drain tile that is going to create issues. That cannot be corrected unless, you know, you actually follow up and, and replace that drain tile. So um, if it's a two and a half acre property and we just say, well, it's, you know, small property, no need. We're, we're not eliminating the, the issue. You can still have that issue there. And, you know, when you look at water damage, and I'll tell you, we, it's, it, it's infuriating. It's to have to live with that and then have that impact your property. And, and, and really, um, it's, so I, I don't really think that that is um, the proper way to go about it to have. So my proposal would be that we, we uh, remove that language, that exemption, because it just isn't practical.
You don't want to tie it to the site plan, so what, how?
I don't want to tie it to the size, you know, anything two and a half acres or, or smaller, it's not necessary. Well, that's not necessarily true, just because it's two and a half acre.
So anybody that comes for a building permit, you want.
Depends on the size.
You want.
Well, I think we need to talk more about the, the word, you know, the verbiage on the site plan, so.
That's what I'm asking you. Right now, what, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying right now, they're saying if, did, to uh, require a site plan, it has to be more than a thousand square feet and more than two and a half acres. You're saying you would prefer having a drain tile study requirement for any addition?
Okay, let's say, so we've got a farm stand that's not been developed. And we know that there's drain tiles on that farm stand. If they ever close the farm stand, we know there's drain tiles there. Now, it's, it's under two acres. So we would be exempting that property. And then the developer would just come in, put in their four, you know, mansions. And, you know, not feel the incentive to address the drain tile issue. And then you've got the surrounding neighbors that are flooded, which is basically what can occur. So how do we prevent that? That's my.
Kind of following up, what, so. What is the difference in expense from doing just a drain tile study versus a full site plan? Or is there a difference, I should ask?
Uh, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not in the consulting engineering business, but I, I mean,
Small park.
I just, I do know that when somebody has to prepare a site plan for just a site plan itself, just engineering, not even considering drain tiles, you're getting into a few thousand dollars. So that's just the site plan by P. When you add the drain tile study to it, your prob, uh, Bruce had estimated, I believe he said, another couple thousand dollars, so.
So is it possible to just do drain tiles without?
That's, that's one, one item I was suggesting is if you still want to offer. I mean, we hadn't even contemplated making any changes to the existing exemptions for uh, when, when a site plan would be required. If you wanted to have specific requirements just for drain tiles, you know, that's something that this committee could consider. That for these types of development, a drain tile study is required. And you, like I mentioned, it, I mean, it's up to you how you want to word it, um, and what, if there would be any exemption or if it would just apply to anything.
So Brian, I, I don't know that a drain tile study on a two acre plot of land or a five acre would be that expensive. I mean, we're talking a small portion of land. But I will tell you that when it's not done, the impact and the cost to the neighbors is huge. And I mean, we've spent thousands of dollars trying to grow grass, trying to plant trees. Me and my neighbors. So I, I'm not so worried about the cost to the developer. Developers are making a lot of money.
It's not always the developer, it could be a property owner who wants to put a horse stable.
Whoever's developing the property. I mean.
Maybe they have a special needs kid, they want to put a barn in for a horse. I mean, I, you can't just assume everyone has a lot of money. And I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying you have to, we, we should consider the fact of what you're asking somebody to do that may just want to put a, a, a small horse stable in or.
Well, a horse stable, you're not, you know, no basements and I mean, that's a.
Well, you could have a foundation with a horse stable. Sure, you got concrete floors. Yep. It's not like a ground, just dirt floor.
I, I would just use it as an example. But, okay, um, other comments? You wanna, you have any comments or final thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, we're at the point where, you know, staff is looking for, to trying to determine what it is that you'd like us to put together.
Sounds like the committee is, is feeling like we would like to have you uh, require a drain tile study for anytime somebody wants to do um, you know, any kind of an outbuilding or a ADU or any, any project.
So is that, I think that you're, when you're converting from A1, so you're not, so I'm talking about farmland, uh, is nothing on it. And is being developed into something else besides farmland. In the case of the, it wasn't a subdivision because it was three parcels and it was greater than two and a half acres or something like that. So since it was greater than two and a half acres, it didn't require any type of a, a drain, drain tile plan done, okay? That was the one that caused, can cause issues. So it's ag land that's being converted and now being, a home is being put up like, things like that. When you're putting up pole barns, typically you don't have a, a concrete. A lot of times we just have dirt or stone put down for our farm equipment. This is, a horse stable would have foundation because it's usually a concrete floors, like hose it down and keep it real clean. It's not like the old time barns you might see. So I, I think that, and I haven't had a chance to look at what the other communities or counties do. But I think we should look at what the other counties do and then come up with a, a recommendation of this is something that we could, could require based upon this. And yours was they do not have to have a site plan if it's two and a half acres or greater. Is that correct?
As long as what the, the, the way the code is written today is if you are building a structure that is 3,000 square feet or less on a lot that's greater than two and a half acres, then you don't need a site plan. So. When you say 3,000 square feet, we're talking like footprint area, okay? So. It's a pretty large home um, for like a first floor and garage. So if that was the case, a drain tile study would not be required under the current code. Or if it was a property less than two and a half acres, then the limit is a thousand square feet. So anything greater than a thousand would require a site plan.
I have a question. Okay. Because all of this is like, first of all, we need, it's, it's getting amorphous, like we need to like bring it in and like, we need more definition. Because in my opinion, the problem is that if somebody builds something, they could possibly break a drain tile causing uh, water destruction on an adjacent property or just in general, right? So that's the issue. Is it depth? Is it depth of building? Like say for instance, if I'm just building something on a slab, do I need to do a drain tile study versus if I'm going to put any, you know, a foundation or put in a basement or something like that? I don't think it has anything to do necessarily with the size of the building. Because if you, if, you know, if, if it just happens to be that a drain tile is there and gets broken, doesn't matter what size the building is. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's just in that, they just happen to hit it at that right location. Sometimes it's just that way. So maybe we should stop looking at the size of the building and probably look at how it's going to be built. Because that is going to determine whether or not we'd even stand the chance of hitting a drain tile.
I, I don't know how, what the depth is, but I can find that out, typically that they put drain tile.
Right. I, I think maybe, maybe we should define, define, okay, one, we're trying to stop water destruction or, you know, flooding or whatever. Alright, and we're trying not to have the owner, the developer of the property or whoever's doing the project, we're not trying to, you know, price them out of doing it. We don't want them to go broke doing a project. I'm just thinking if I bought a little farm stand and I want to, you know, put my tiny home on it, I don't want to go broke putting what I thought was gonna be a little ti, I know they probably won't have it in Will County, but I don't want to go broke, put my little tiny home on my, you know, my little side thing or whatever. So I just, maybe my planting my little greenhouse, okay, for my tiny home. I mean, I don't want to go broke doing that. So is it, is it necessary for me to do if I'm just doing a little greenhouse? Do I have to do a, a tile? It all depends on what we're doing. So let's define how we're, what we're trying to do and like just work towards doing that. And I, I think let's look at depth as opposed to size and that might give us what we need.
Something, and what Joe said earlier is true, when I worked for the road district. Yeah, anybody could come cut a line and some of them will just go on. Hopefully, nobody notices. Yeah, but they do that unfortunately, so. And with drain tiles, you don't notice it until there's heavy rain that you might have. And you yourself may not notice it on your property, having not lived there before. Your neighbors would definitely notice because they know how the, the flow of the water goes. So. I'll get some of those questions and then we'll bring it back, I guess, next time.
Good discussion. Anything else? Moving on? Alright. Uh, 2025 Will County Comprehensive Noxious Weed Work Plan, Colin.
You heard this last month. Unfortunately, I didn't understand the procedure. You needed to have a resolution in front of you to make, make the recommendation for approval. You now have that resolution in your packet. So we need you have to recommend uh, approval again.
Okay. We have a motion from member Newquist, second Mitchell. Previous rule.
Yes, for what?
And second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a Will County Comprehensive Noxious Weed Work Plan.
Hooray.
Thank you. On to the full board, right? Uh, update on Land Resource Management Plan.
We had uh, put out the bid uh, for the update and we again received no, no bids. No, no responses uh, to it. So we're contemplating what our, our next steps are and also uh, going to s- seek out uh, known uh, companies that we've, that we've worked with in the past and kind of say, what's going on? But we don't, we don't know if it's uh, that they're overwhelmed with other projects or uh, something's deficient in our project. And then also uh, uh, Nick Hernandez is working on the Fairmont Plan and uh, his, is currently working on finalizing the uh, the data collection portion, uh, getting all the residents' feedbacks and he's coming up with a summary of, of all the uh, concerns and their, the uh, priority of those concerns.
Any questions on that? Alright, that concludes our agenda. Onto reports, communications and correspondence. I'm first. I don't really have much here, but as a uh, reflect back on my, and finishing up my first term here as chairman of the Land Use Committee. I just want to say thank you to staff, especially the three of you here. Director Dubois and Brian and Margie. You guys have been holding my hand here for two years. I can't believe it's been two years, but thanks for all the, the meetings and Brian, all the phone calls, all the, all the support you've given me in this committee. It's been a pleasure working with you. Onto committee members. Any comments from committee members? Go ahead.
Frankie, just want to say you've done a great job as chair. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, director, do you have anything?
Just thank you all and just have a good afternoon.
Yeah, we're gonna make it, aren't we? And uh, any public comments? Come on down. I figured you might be here for public comment. Oh, hold on, I don't think there's any. Yep, uh, the, the, the little guy, there you go.
Alright, I'm Dave Still, Local 150. You know, these solar farms are a hot topic and I just like to, I've sat in countless meetings for the last two, two years. There's a big um, solar farm Buffalo Road Solar, you might have heard of it. You can look it up on the Grundy County uh, website. And they have battery storage on site. Illinois shines. It's one of the best resources. It's tracking all the information you guys were asking. You can search by county. As far as how many puts have been, uh, permits have been applied for. The size of them, uh, what's considered uh, community solar, what's not. You can pretty much get all your, your data there and it's pretty user friendly. As far as that, you know, I, like I said, whether you're for or against them. Doesn't matter to me. I'm here to make sure they're done with organized labor. There's language in place for, for the Illinois reduction, or the Illinois, or not Illinois, I'm sorry. Inflation Reduction Act, that they have to use accredited apprenticeship programs, whatnot. That's where we come in to make sure that that and/or prevailing wage applies. We're seeing a lot of out of state contractors come in and steal this work. You know, you can debate whether they're viable, whether or not. I can tell you that our president business manager has had meetings with uh, Constellation. I don't know if you guys have uh, heard about Three Mile Island opening up. Amazon just signed a 20 year lease. We need more power. You can't have it both ways with um, basically wanting your electric vehicle and, and/or wanting your convenience of your digital thermostat and artificial intelligence. And that's what's driving a lot of this demand for energy. People want to make it a political issue with, you know, if it's a green energy product, it's a Biden agenda, it's a blue agenda. You gotta stop thinking of it that way. Your biggest consumers of these, and the biggest champions are these uh, data centers. And I mean, when you've got companies like Microsoft and Amazon who want the artificial intelligence to power their websites and all their features, this is where we're at. You know, I don't, it's not worth debating whether they're viable when you have the president of Constellation telling we need 40% more kilowatt outage. So get it from any energy you can get it from, you know, whether you want to debate and tell people what they can and can't do with their land, just the problem's not going away. And I feel like you gotta educate yourself to what's driving these. And that Illinois shines, you'll see all the applications, thousands of them. It'll show you the status, where, where they're at in the permitting process. They've, they're tracking all this data. It's there if you want to educate yourself. I would say, just suggest you do that, uh, start. Um, you can go back like with, I, I referenced Buffalo, uh, Buffalo Road Solar because it's basically a case study for you guys. They have onsite um, battery storage. I know we have the big one, uh, Essio down there. You can, and I feel like Buffalo Road, they went back, they built berms, they put 24 Evergreens with the special use. I mean, according to the renderings, you wouldn't even know it was there if you drove by. I grew up in Will County. ELP 55 bought my parents. My house was built up by the, the railroad. I understand what development does to a rural setting. That's all I've ever lived in the country. But I tell you what, if I could have a solar farm around my house versus a bunch of damn noisy trucks busting out my roads as a taxpayer, I'll take that solar farm. I had a farmer speak, I listened to a farmer speak. He says, we harvest corn for ethanol for our vehicles. We harvest beans for so, biodiesel. He goes, why, why is the county and my neighbors telling me I can't harvest the sun? Had a legitimate point. The fact that the USDA and the farmers actually uh, give grant money to farmers for their drying operations. Just, all I guess is be open minded and look at, there's so much more information out there about you know, if you take the politics out of it, the, the man is there. Will it replace? No. You know, we're, I'm for any form of energy if there's claim because guess what? We don't get that energy, our, our price per kilowatt is gonna go up and we're all gonna pay more. So I'm just saying, use what resources are out there to, to educate yourself when you think about these things. I'm all for the special use. Get, get as much aesthetically as you can out of it. You know, to make it less of an, you know, some people. know, to make it less of an, you know, some people's, I just don't like the look of them. Well, people don't like to, you know, when you live in the country, you usually go out there because you want to, you don't want to deal with HOAs. People don't like the style of home you build, or the color, the siding you put on a house. That shouldn't set precedence of, you know, you just use education to make your decision, you know, information to make your decisions is all that I got. And I'm, like I said, I've been sitting in these board meetings for two years now, and I'm willing to help in any way. Like you said, yea or nay, I don't get into the, the should or shouldn't, or what's going to prevail, but I can tell you that data centers are powering this. They're the biggest consumers of these tax credits, because these data centers use, you guys heard of Bitcoin mining, data mining, all that stuff? Those are supercomputers. That's what these data centers are. And they're the biggest purchaser of these credits. And I would use Amazon and Three Mile Island is a reference of what, what this is really about in a, in a grand scheme of things, is the, the demand for more energy, you know? So that's all I got.
Okay, no executive session today. Just need a motion to adjourn.
Just a little bit, Joe.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, next meeting is scheduled for December 10th, 2024. Thanks, everybody, have a great Thanksgiving.